Aye, of the United States of America. To the people of this nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Send them up.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kendall. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Uh, we have at this time in our meeting, time for public comments. The Board encourages citizens to attend this meeting. Citizens have the opportunity to comment on issues and concerns according to our policies 210 dot nine and 213. If there's anyone that would like to address the Board, please come up to the podium. We'll give you five minutes, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Kemper Woodsmall, and I'm fourteen years old. And my address is one-one-three Paul Air Court.
Could you speak a little louder, I just can't hear you.
Oh. My name is Kemper Woodsmall, and I am fourteen years old. And my address is one-one-three Paul Air Court. I am a student in Ms. Bishop's and Ms. Miller's Understand Social Systems class at BHS Summer School Program. And today I'd like to talk to you about free lunches and free breakfast at our school district, in our school district. Some of you may know that it's possible for our district kids to qualify for free lunch and breakfast through the Community Eligibility Provision, or CEP for short. And just so you guys don't get confused, I'm gonna use CEP for the rest of the speech. This is a federal program funded by the USDA. The Iowa Department of Education has an eligibility list for the districts in Iowa that meet the CEP requirements. To be eligible, a school district must have forty percent or more of the district's kids eligible for free meals without using a household application. This includes children in the foster care system, or families who receive food stamps, or temporary assistance for needy families. Our district definitely is eligible for this because our number is fifty-five point forty-eight percent, according to the Iowa Department of Education numbers from last year. Our district has the seventh highest level of the students who automatically qualify for free meals in the entire state of Iowa, which adds above, which, all of that's one-hundred-and-fifty people, so we're seventh highest. I understand that this will cost the school district money to provide these meals, since not all schools would be reimbursed at one-hundred percent. But it's obvious that this is needed by many in our community. With all that being said, the reason I am doing this speech is because I believe that all kids should get free lunch and breakfast no matter what. When a kid eats lunch, they have nutrition throughout the day. So with free lunch, uh, free lunch and breakfast, they should be able to learn better with also not having to worry about the cost of that free breakfast and lunch. According to the Food Research and Action Center, when the child's nutrition needs are met, the child is more attentive in class and has better attendance and fewer disciplinary problems. For all those reasons that I just listed, that is why I believe that we should do the CEP program and that kids should get free lunch and breakfast. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Woodsmall.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yep. Are you related to the Woodsmalls from Mount Pleasant? Do you know?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm a Woodsmall from Mount Pleasant, so you're probably my cousin.
Is anyone else like to address? Come on.
Chief Turtle, one-twenty-seven Greenwood Drive, Burlington. Uh, I still believe, uh, school safety for students and working conditions for teachers need to remain, need to maintain our highest priority. And I've got my signatures, so I guess I will see you on ballot election day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address? Alright, there are none. We'll move on to our consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, including payment of bills previously paid in the amount of four-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Unpaid bills in the amount of two-million, eighty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. P-card purchases, BMO Harris Bank, in the amount of thirty-eight-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and ninety-five cents. And gifts in the amount of three-thousand, one-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents for this board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hatterburg. Is there any discussion?
Looks like we've lost a veteran teacher. Someone to tell him gifted to have six years in the system. Hate to see the veteran teachers go.
I had a question on, um, I have two questions actually. There's a transfer from, uh, there's a transfer to North Hill, I think, Mrs. Sigler. Is she coming from Sunnyside? Is that where she was before?
I believe so, yes.
Just trying to make sure that's the same one. And then another question is, uh, Mr. Sayer, where does he go? He's leaving North Hill. Where's he, is he staying with the system or is he leaving?
Uh, Lacy? No, he's staying in the system. He's, yeah, he's not going to intermediate school. I believe he's teaching fourth grade.
That's correct. He has decided to stay at North Hill.
Oh, he's gonna stay in?
Yes, he will still be in the, in the district.
What did he teach? What's he teaching now?
He was fifth grade, so then he would've moved to Aldo, but then he decided to stay when an opening came up.
He wants to stay in the building and just go down?
Correct.
Thank you. That wasn't clear from what I read.
Yeah. Any questions? Any other questions, comments?
I just wanna make a comment if there's almost two million dollars in open enrollment payments in this consent agenda.
And that's, and that's six-hundred-plus, dude.
It is.
Yep. Not, not quite seven, but it's on the upside of six.
Yeah, it is on the upside of six.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Abstained. Motion carries. Move on to the next item, District Positive Accomplishments, BHS Science Fair Students. Toby Bash.
Hi, I'm Liz Hanning, and I had the opportunity this year to take three students from BHS to the International Science and Engineering Fair in Phoenix, Arizona, in the month of May. Um, one of our students couldn't be here tonight, so I'm gonna speak for her and them and let these two young ladies explain what they did. Uh, we had a freshman, Kylie Wolf, who did something that we haven't had any, um, BHS students do before. She qualified as an observer. And what an observer is, is the judges pick a freshman at the State Science Fair that they think is really has outstanding potential, and they want them to go and experience what the International Science Fair is like, so to try to encourage them to continue on. And she did a project, uh, her project was entitled, Can colder temperatures, um, impact the growth of bacteria in common chicken eggs? And she found out, no, it doesn't. Uh, weirdly enough, she found that thirty-seven degrees Celsius, which is human body temp, does the best job. And there's a whole lot of science behind that, but I'm not gonna go into that. She actually took second place in microbiology at State. And when she went to ISF, as she goes an observer, uh, one of the things she could, she could, she got to go to all the things that they went to, uh, but she also had some additional training that she did with the other observers where they were talked to about how to pitch an idea, how to do statistics and things like that. And then she participated in assisting at the science fair where she was in charge of a group of local students, that she took them around to events. Uh, some of the events were going around and looking at the exhibits. Again, the purpose is to encourage other students to get involved in them. So she's the first one we've ever had who's qualified that, for that, and is really exciting. And then I'm gonna let them tell you about their project.
So mine and Sarah's project was largely centered around finding an alternate food source for monarch butterflies. And we decided to do this because the monarch population has been on the decline for the past twenty years, and that's largely due to the eradication of their singular food source, which is milkweed. So we wanted to find an alternate food source to help stop this decline. And what we found was that by making a plant called dogbane smell like milkweed, we were able to get the caterpillars to eat the dogbane, and they were able to go into a cocoon and emerge as butterflies.
And so after we did this project, we presented at, um, a couple different fairs. And at our State Science Fair, we were named, uh, Best in Category for Animal Science. And we were also named overall grand champion of the State Science Fair, which earned us a spot to go compete at the International Science and Engineering Fair in Phoenix. And at that fair, we were invited to another, um, International Science Fair held in Brazil this coming October. And we were also, um, interviewed by a couple representatives from a research fraternity, Sigma Xi. And we were, uh, invited to present at their national convention, and we were also invited to publish our paper.
Wow.
Amazing.
Wow. That's pretty cool.
I have a question. Uh, I never thought I'd say this, as a farm kid growing up pulling milkweeds to get rid of them, but is there a place that I can buy milkweed seeds now to put in my garden? Do you know?
Yeah, uh, most places actually sell milkweed seeds, and there's definitely a lot available online. Uh, we bought our monarchs through a place that's, uh, it really tries to get people to plant milkweed, and they even give out free seeds.
Can I buy them online, or can I buy them locally?
Uh, you could probably buy them locally, just anywhere, probably at Lowe's.
But they used to be a terrible thing when I was a kid, pulling milkweeds. It was terrible, trying to get rid of them.
Does dogbane grow naturally around here?
Yeah, it does.
And what did you have to do to make it smell like?
So we, uh, made a solution. We ground up some of the milkweed and then, uh, filtered it, and then we made our spray and we used it throughout the whole of our project. And dogbane actually grows in all of the continental United States and a couple of the Canadian provinces, so it'd be a really good alternative for the monarchs.
But isn't that real labor intensive? I mean, if you got a spray up, that mean a farmer would have to sprays his, so he can make it smell? I don't understand how you do that.
Um, no, it's one of the things, so with our project, we had so many different ways you could take it, so we did it indefinitely in the worst season of the year, in winter, when they're all gone. So we had to, um, get all of our milkweed and order all of our butterflies. So, um, we focused more on raising them on it, but for, um, the future, we wanted to look into finding a more applicable way to use it, and then just fine-tuning our solution.
So you don't really have a way of applying that program?
Just not quite yet.
I see. Okay, thanks.
So you guys are headed to college, though, right? So where are you going to college?
Um, I'm going to the University of Iowa.
And I'm going to Michigan State.
So will you carry on the research?
Um, we were looking, uh, we wanted to do some stuff during the summer to kinda finish up, but...
That's great.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We didn't hear their names, did we?
Um, my name is Karen, and I'm at Michigan.
Great job. Alright, we do now have a student representative here, so we'll go to student.
Okay, I received official notice from the Grand Power EIA that we can do our community listens. Uh, we do have research credit, and they are interested in doing a specific training for the school district. Um, I spent additional hours, uh, working with evaluations. At the end of each evaluation are the three big rocks that we're trying to move, and Mr. Reynolds did mention in his, the, uh, the completely free eating. So Greg's already leaning forward into the young man's presentation. In my June ninth, uh, board update, I mentioned ISBA legislative, uh, stuff is coming due. I will pass this around, the reason I did not have it at your location, because I wanna make sure that, uh, that you're getting it placed into your hands. These are the, uh, two thousand nineteen Iowa, uh, School Board Association Legislative Resolutions. Uh, what we ask is that you come back to the next board meeting, have your priorities picked out. Um, you will recall last year, Mr. Courtney, um, with, uh, with agreement from the board, had his own that we, uh, submitted. But, uh, please come prepared to the next meeting.
During the last, we passed it.
And you passed overwhelmingly, but then they, uh...
And then they backed, they changed it.
It was one of the more interesting things I've seen in my ten years of serving.
Yeah, they went clearly out of the guidelines and...
Of Robert's rule of order. And, uh, so, uh, come prepared to, uh, present your top four or five. Uh, we'll use Robert's rule of order, discussion to narrow that down, then that information will go to Greg, and Greg will submit it to the, um, we'll submit that to ISBA.
The last sheet, is that what they wanted to do?
It could be.
Okay.
The next document I wanted to place directly in your hands is a copy of my evaluation. And, uh, the evaluation takes place in, uh, July, during the July board meeting, so you have a month, uh, to, uh, follow board policy, and then we'll, uh, we'll conduct that evaluation. Uh, the past week, I was a opening speaker at the Intuition Leadership Academy. Uh, please remember to go to the shared file that Mrs. Johnson publishes every week from our cabinet meeting. Wednesday morning, I met with Vice President Ross and Vice President Kendall to discuss this meeting. We also discussed establishing a wall of fame at Bracewell Stadium. Full discussion covered a great deal of thought and consideration. Uh, Purple and Gray has put a great deal of work and effort into the development of the implementation of Bracewell Hall of Fame Wall, and both parties agree that Purple and Gray should move forward with their efforts. Um, I spent time speaking with music boosters, the athletic boosters, Purple and Gray, Notre Dame, the city of Burlington, SEC, uh, to begin conversations with the RFP. Um, remember, we can't talk about the high school now with, uh, with the one cent settles tax coming back. We, uh, we have to have the revenue purpose statement and work some stuff through with the attorneys, um, so we don't want to get in too big of a rush. But we are working on it. Um, I did visit, uh, summer schools this past week, uh, went out to, uh, to the Girl Scout Camp, Camp Alkeeta, is that it? Alkeeta. And, uh, I was in four H, I wasn't a Boy Scout, I was a Girl Scout. Uh, good stuff going on. It's, uh, tremendous. One other thing you need to be aware of, I have spoken with the city, Memorial Auditorium will not be operational by the, uh, welcome back ceremony, uh, so we do not have that as a resource to hold our meeting, um, due to flood damage. I have, uh, reached out to Kazan, as I have reached out to Comfort Inn Suites, um, so we are looking at other locations to hold our welcome back. Uh, we need to fit, uh, in excess of six-hundred-and-fifty people in one place at one time. Uh, we do have a Speaker, Trevor Reagan, um, so we will continue to work that issue.
The main floor of that auditorium, Mr. Heard, is it?
Yes, the, uh, there's, the, the main floor of the auditorium was like two-by-sixes on end, uh, put together.
Four floors standing on end, but...
Yeah.
How did the water get up there, I guess? It would've been flooded clear up to North Hill right there. I don't understand that.
The floor was buckled again.
Supposed to be from underneath.
It could've weathered up.
It could've had water.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, but today...
A lot of steph.
Jim Farno confirmed today it will not be ready by time, and I need to find another way.
That's August twenty-first, is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah, Howard Johnson's, like, they got enough room for five hundred people there.
Yeah.
You don't really talk about the Howard Johnson.
Howard Johnson.
It must be Old Holiday, it's across, it's right there on the side by Taco Bell, so...
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure, yeah, it used to be the Holodome. Yeah, yeah.
Back in the seventies, I don't know.
I think those were the time they had room for five hundred people. They expand up to five hundred people, and they're pretty easily, well, too, so you might check on them, too.
Yeah, well, uh, lights gonna be six-fifty for us.
Yeah, you might check on them.
Yeah, good idea.
Any other questions for Pat?
Uh, yeah, we set a work session, another work session, is that correct?
The twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth of July.
Yep.
Thank you.
Twenty-ninth of July?
Correct.
It's a Monday.
Okay.
Twenty-hundredth of July.
What time is that gonna be?
Same time, same bad channel.
Were we talking, did we do it at four, or can we do four?
Four to seven. Sure about the seven?
Are we, are we looking? I was asking earlier.
Let's just give you enough heads as.
Yeah, because suspended, yeah.
Anything else? Let's move on. First item of discussion, RagBri update. I see some RagBri people.
Good evening, Board members. Uh, I've got Kate Brewer from the Burlington, uh, Greater Burlington Partnership with me, Scott Zeiser from the Athletic Boosters, and Stephanie Rush, uh, with the Music Boosters. We're all gonna give you kind of a little update of, kind of, what's going on, uh, with the RagBri in the school district and what they're using. Um, as far as school buildings and grounds, um, we do have a group that's using Aldo. It's the Adapted Sports Team, which is a team of about eighty people. Um, they are a special needs group, and that's why we put them there, so they would basically have the use of, of, uh, the locker rooms, the showers, and that just to themselves. So, uh, they're using Aldo. Uh, the high school, pretty much all the grounds, and, and, and Ms. K will, uh, will go through that, but pretty much all the grounds are being used at this time, including the, uh, parking lots. Um, we're also using the cafeteria, the pool, all the locker rooms, the gym, the safe room, and music rooms. And Ed Stone, at this point, uh, there's a group of about fifteen-hundred people that's gonna be camping there, and they're called the Pork Bellies. Uh, they're pretty much a self-contained, uh, group of people that do their own food, uh, their own entertainment. But they will more likely have some people that camp inside, and we are ready for that. At this point, uh, with the Adapted Team and their leader here, we really don't have a need to custodial staff. At the high school, I think we're gonna be fine. At the high school, we're gonna have two custodians around the class. It's gonna come in and work a third shift, so we got somebody there through the night in case there's any need. And at, uh, I'm gonna have one custodian on shift at all times. So, that pretty, uh, sums up, uh, for me and the school district. Um, I know, I would just like to add that this is a really, really great opportunity for the boosters and, uh, the music boosters and the athletic boosters to, to make some good money, which is given back to the district and the kids anyway. So, anyway, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott.
I have a question before you. Um, do you see any, uh, possibility that there would be RVs and that kind of stuff on the grounds?
So, at this point, we've got some semis that might wreck up the grass. On the northeast corner of our practice field, uh, where the drive is, as you, as you first pull off. But it, it just depends upon if it's, if the ground's soft or not. If the ground's soft, they're not gonna be able to do it. So, other than that, we're not letting any RVs or anything off the hard pavement.
That looks valid. It's like at the high school, they will be in the building using the showers.
Correct. Yep, we're gonna open up both locker rooms, plus the pool locker rooms.
And what's the number of camping at the high school? Two, two, Kate probably has?
It's approximately twenty-five-hundred.
Twenty-five-hundred campers.
They're really respectful. They really take care of stuff.
Yeah, they do.
So a little bit of background, I'm Kate Brewer, by the way. Um, a little bit of background on RagBri, if you're not familiar with it, uh, it is the Forty-seventh Annual Registers Annual Great Bike Ride Across Iowa. It starts on the west coast of Iowa and ends on the east coast, the Mississippi River. Uh, it's a week-long bicycle ride, and this is the first time that it has been an overnight in Burlington. Normally, we're the end community on the Mississippi River, uh, so this is new for us, and it will bring approximately twenty to thirty thousand people into the community. Um, and so our community potentially will double in size, our area here. Um, we have a theme of Rally to the Alley. We wanna make sure we feature Snake Alley. While it's not on the exact route, uh, it's definitely one of our biggest attractions in the area, and we also think it's really fun to incorporate pep rally, and so we have some of the cheerleaders coming out and helping at the welcome, and lots of different things like that that we've, um, got planned. Um, as they come into the community, they will go around the high school to the, or I'm sorry, they will go around the hospital to the west on Washington Road. They'll head south on Gear Avenue, um, head east on West Avenue, crossing Highway sixty-one, and then at that point, those folks that are staying at, uh, Burlington High School. We also have campgrounds at Notre Dame and Ed Stone in that area. They'll head north into their campground area. We have additional campgrounds throughout the community, um, as we're trying to place all of these individuals. For, we're, we're actually, it's been a great working relationship with Tim and all the individuals that we've asked for help and your opinion, um, and how can we feed all of these folks? Where can we house all of these folks? Um, they need showers and all, all of those kinds of things. They have to pick up the trash, uh, afterwards, but we do find that they are respectful in those things. Um, so RagBri has an official, um, riders that can pay RagBri, and they haul their, uh, tents, their equipment on two semis, that's what Tim was discussing, and there's about two thousand that stay with that group. Um, so that is the official RagBri baggage and, and tent camping group. Um, they will stay, be staying on the north there, as Tim mentioned. Um, then we also have charters that come into the community, and so you might pay a charter or be with a team, and they haul your luggage for you and haul your tents. Some groups set up your tents for you, depends how much you wanna get involved and how much you wanna do on their own. Um, there are opportunities, while we can't charge for camping, there's opportunities to charge individuals, obviously for food, of course, but also for showers and some of those amenities, like getting into the pool or that indoor camping that Tim was talking about. Um, and so there also will be, um, an event happening in the downtown area, uh, that will have live bands and live music from two PM to eleven-thirty PM, I believe, and we have shuttles that will be taking individuals back and forth, uh, from the various campgrounds down to that downtown area, and throughout the community as well, um, if they need some sort of an amenity that we can help them with, so.
Hello, I'm Scott Zeiser, and I am from the Athletic Booster Club, and as Kate said, Burlington's going to swell twice the size it normally is, and so we gotta have a lot of hungry people. And that's where athletic boosters and the music boosters come in, and we are going to feed all these people, and hopefully make a big dollar for our athletics and our music people. So this, this is a once-in-a-lifetime event for Burlington. So we're gonna really tap into it. We're, we got a great crew already getting volunteers. We've got a, a head crew already, Stephanie and Cheryl represent basically the logistics of everything going on. So we're just going to take advantage of the people in Burlington and feed them maybe multi-times, because they're actually, it's a short ride to Burlington from their previous stay. So they're gonna get here probably before noon, some of them, so they're gonna eat lunch, they're gonna eat dinner, stay overnight, so hopefully we make it a, a great experience for them. So that's, it's a team effort, so that's what we're gonna help for. Stephanie, Stephanie has some more logistics. If you guys have any questions, she's the number cruncher here. So, but, um, like, like I said, there's twenty-two-hundred people or more at the high school. Edward Stone, we have a contract with fifteen-hundred right now that we're serving in the cafeteria. So that's, that's a guaranteed price already. We're just developing the meal and everything else, so this girl here is...
So you'd be cooking in the cafeteria then?
Um, we're, we're gonna pre-cook a lot, but we're gonna serve the fifteen-hundred dinners in the cafeteria, yes.
Ed Stone.
And Ed Stone.
So I'm, I'm sure the both of you, I, I wanna make sure people in our vast listening audience at home, um, will, will be aware of how to, to volunteer and sign up, so...
That's a great, that's a great question, because we are always asking for volunteers. And if you have just two hours to help out, because we're gonna have a girl team out there, and you can imagine twenty-two-hundred people serving at one place, that's, that's a lot of food. Lot of energy. So we've got the, all the, um, football, wrestling, cheer, volleyball, they're all on board already, so, and baseball, yes. So the coaches know what we're asking, and they are, they're right there with it, so...
So if somebody wanted to sign, say, hey, I can help, how can they, what's the best way for them to do that?
They can help. Um, currently, right now, we have a Facebook page where you can all go to that is combined by the Music Boosters and the RagBri Committee. It is, um, VCHS RagBri. Uh, it is only using specifically, it's only gonna be specifically this time. Otherwise, they can also go to the Music Boosters, um, page, or they can go to the Athletic page, and there should be, uh...
And there should be, at least, it's not pinned at the music boosters page at the top right now, but there is a Google Doc where it says volunteer. And so they will be able to click onto that link, and it will go, and they just basically fill out their email, their name, phone number, I'm trying to think what else. And then there are shifts and like what they would like to help out with. So, and then we also do have another document, a document too. If you're not wanting to do that, we are looking for donations for our bake sale, because we're doing a free will donation bake sale. And there is another document there, and then it also gives kind of like just some ideas of basically what we're looking for and how they need to label items and so forth and stuff like that. And we will be contacting them a week or two, just to make sure that they still want to actually help out, because we don't want something to happen, you know, and them not feel bad that they can't do anything. There'll be further information on when they need to bring and where they need to bring the items here coming up. We just ask, Facebook is definitely the biggest thing that, how we're communicating with most of our adults and students and teachers.
And we're meeting every Wednesday at 6:00. And this meeting Wednesday, which will be this Wednesday, will be in Huxsey Harbor, Huxsey Building at Pizzazz. Then after that, it's down at the Drake at 6:00. If anybody has questions, concerns, wants to join, that's where we meet. And it's welcome to anybody.
And the date for this grand event is Friday, July?
It's 26.
It's July 26th and 27th, but we will be needing a couple of things and stuff on the 25th of the Thursday in order to set up and prepare. So we're kind of still working on the logistics for the 25th, because we have to work with Tim and the school district, obviously. I don't know exactly what you all want, though. I have a little bit of a breakdown between the schools. As they've all said, Cheryl and I have been kind of heading up, and we've been trying to make sure that little things have been done. Pork Bellies is the group that is at Edstone, is between 1,500 and 7, we've been told approximately go, might go up to 17,500. They are providing portable showers and restrooms and so forth. They will be having entertainment there also. There'll be a main meal provided there from 5:00 to 7:00 specifically for them, so the food that we are preparing for them will only be for that community, for that. Boosters will be grilling there, serving breakfast in the morning, providing towels. There will be a concession stand. We're doing a smores bar and a couple other watermelon tables and so forth. There is a volunteer station that will be there to help guide our volunteers. We're asking that all our volunteers wear the purple shirts so that they'll be able to, but we're also kind of looking for the, they have the Rally for the Alley shirts too, but we're trying to make sure that they know that you are a representative of BHS. And if you don't have a purple tee shirt, please contact your athletic booster or music boosters. We will gladly set you up. BHS, there are a couple camping groups. We've been told to prepare between 25,000 and 3,000, because people from the district sometimes, or even the community, will come and help and want to kind of see what's going on and party and kind of have that kind of thing. We are using the pool, and we do have set hours. We are setting it up, and then we are going to close down for a little bit and help clean and so forth and make sure that all things are safe there. All the lifeguards that will be there will be certified, and Mr. Flaherty, the choir director, is in charge of that. NIX is on site, camping indoors, I'm trying to think here what else. The information station hub is there, and the cheerleaders, like Scott said, they are going to be helping out the Rally for Alley. Unfortunately, the band was not able to do that. We just couldn't get enough kids, plus a lot of the band students are also doing enrolled with sports, so we didn't want to pull from there. Things that we are continually working on, we, communication is our big thing. The choir, Mr. Flaherty suggested that we would use the.
Mocky talkies.
Thank you. Mocky talkies that they do have, and we were going to see if possibly the other schools, in order to have a couple extra, if we'd be able to use them in order to communicate, because cell is going to be very spotty.
Yeah, it would be very slow at best, they say, because of all the hits going on.
Yes. So we have a phone tree and a communication thing that we're working on, so that we can all be in safety. The big thing too, I was asked about, was ice, which will be our next really big thing. Hopefully, maybe we'd be able to use ice machines at the school. If not, we're going to have to look into having to look through a retailer, because we're going to need a lot of ice. Freezers, we have, are renting a couple at Standard and Beaverdale that are going to be used at the high school, since we're not able to use the one there. And we're probably going to use the freezer at Edstone, if that's still possible and available. Like I said, bake sale, we're looking for 1,500 items to be donated alone at Edstone and 1,000 at BHS, possibly more, we prefer. Food, we're hoping, we are doing grilling, we're going to do a couple diverse kind of things, the concession stand. Grilling's going to start at 10:00 in the morning and go.
10 to 10.
Yeah, 10 to 10, that's what we decided, okay. Smore station, we're going to use the sternos, but we might also look into kind of another way also to help them be able to do that. Drinks will be provided, there'll be water stations at the high school, and basically how, if we needed help, what we would ask for help is like through the district, maybe trying to help through your Facebook pages, through your webpage, or in order to post out, because since we're, we obviously have links for the coaches, but the only other people that have for the music is a little bit harder in the sense, because unless they have signed up for our web, our pages or anything like that, we have no contact with them. And we just want to try to use all hands on deck and try to use it. All the kids are getting silver code hours, they're getting them signed straight there, and then they get back. So I don't know if you need any other.
I just, I'm glad that you're here tonight. I actually am on a committee, and I just, I'm blown away by the volume. Kate's too modest to tell you, but she's got a binder that's about the size of this laptop.
Yeah.
But it's just phenomenal, and the amount of work that's coming together community-wide. I'm certainly hopeful, and I know the district, and I know our parents, and I know our families are going to respond and come out and force, because this is a fantastic way to earn some money and also just show off to other people how great Burlington is.
Yeah, we were intrigued, Muscatine did this years, a few years ago. They told us some numbers. I'm not going to say numbers, because then there's, we're going to be held accountable, but they were very, very healthy numbers, is what they were. So that's, our goal is what we're trying, what Muscatine does, so, yeah. And then we have Burlington's come above, because we've got people donating generators, whatever they have, they're doing it, so we can pull this thing off, so.
Mr. Courtney, did you?
Yeah, for not, not being real tentative when you came up, you have a lot of information.
She's very organized.
Well, my question's this, I've got like 19 staying at my house in the yard, in my house. I only live by Block from high school, but my question's this, they talk about the beer they're going to drink, what, how are we handling that on school property? Are we going to allow them to drink beer there, or what? And I'm not trying to be acutely or anything.
That's your question.
So nor on our grounds are we going to sell alcohol, and we'll police it like any other normal time.
Can they drink beer there? I mean, they're going to be.
Well, like I said, we're going to police it just like any normal time.
We also will have local law enforcement who will be obviously 24 hours in that period of time, so if folks are out of hand in any way, they will be called.
Will you have your headset on, Kate?
Yes, I will.
So I just wanted, we have, we don't ordinarily allow drinks on school property.
Correct.
But, okay, I got it.
Do you want to drink private?
Yeah, no, no, yeah, no dimes.
They have a liquor license, yes.
That's my own question.
We're trying to counter the alcohol over there with the smores bar and stuff like that, fun things, kind of to, you know, help them, hey, we can have some clean fun over here.
I know they're a drinking group, I've been around them a lot, they're a drinking group, just, but, you know, as long as they're not causing any trouble, I guess, it's not a big deal.
So this might be a city issue more than a school, but we do have a couple neighbors, a business and a residence on Johansson Drive. Are we taking care of their needs? Have we contacted them?
Yes, I believe the police department has contacted them. We've also been feeling lots of phone calls from businesses that are along the route, because they will be impacted as well. And the road will not be completely closed, it will just be closed to through traffic. So if you have a need to get through there, to go to one of those locations, you'll be able to get through. They will be manned, like barecase that can be moved to let them through.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the board?
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, it's just a massive undertaking, so it's amazing.
We'll tell you when it's all over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the next item on our agenda, the handbooks for clerical, custodians, food service, and transportation.
So yes, it is that time of year where we look at handbooks for your approval for our clerical, custodial, food service, and transportation staff. Minimal changes were made, mainly clearing up some of the language, providing some needed clarification, as well as salary information. It was updated in all of the books. We would ask that you approve these handbooks as presented.
Is there a motion in that regard? We can have discussion.
I move we approve the handbooks as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hatterburg, discussion?
Is there a grievance procedure in that?
In the grievance procedure, there's an open door policy that is mentioned in those, in all of the handbooks, similar to the certified staff handbook.
You know my opinion on open doors.
I do.
I will approve this.
So there's really no grievance procedure, just?
Open doors, as same as certified staff, which has worked very well up to this point.
Any other comments, questions?
Oh, I have a lot, but I won't.
You want to get out early, though?
No, I just, I have a lot of comments about grievance procedure, lack of that, and all that, but I've said what I can think of.
Well, hearing nothing further, all those in favor of approving the handbooks for clerical, custodians, food service, and transportation, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go on to meet and confer groups.
Yeah, we're just, I don't have anything else for discussion. Yeah, the meet and confer groups, previous years, which consisted of the exempt secretaries, professional services, maintenance, and administrative staff. We typically follow wage increases that were given to the certified staff, which was 2% for this year, so our recommendation is 2% for the meet and confer groups, with the two exceptions that you had noted here for Ms. Hattner and Ms. Butler.
Okay. Is there a motion in this regard?
I'll move that we approve the handbooks as presented.
Meet and confer groups?
The confer groups, yep.
Okay.
The meet and confer handbook.
No, we're not to that, it's just the pay increase for meet and confer.
Oh, I guess I'm.
Number seven.
I didn't know that.
You're for that?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second approving the meet and confer base wage increases as recommended.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Is there any discussion? What discussion do we have here? Or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the meet and confer groups item, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Yes.
We have two abstains. Motion still carries.
Oh, I see.
All right, next.
Two abstaining persons.
Mr. Vicstrum and Mr. Kendall. My hearing's correct. Next item, number eight, meet and confer groups handbook.
Yes, so similar, minimal changes, some of the insurance costs, some updates. We would, every year, we ask for you to review and approve this handbook as well, and so we would ask that you approve as presented.
Okay, is there a motion regarding the meet and confer groups handbook?
I move we approve the meet and confer handbook as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Any discussion or questions?
Same comment, same comment as the other handbook.
Okay. Regarding grievance procedure. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor of the meet and confer groups handbook, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstain? Motion carries. And the next item, number nine, the resolution to consider continued participation in the instructional support levy. So in your packet, you have a resolution, which I will read, and then we will look for a motion. So I will read the resolution. To consider continued participation in the instructional support program, whereas the board of directors wishes to consider continued participation in the instructional support program as provided in Iowa Code, Sections 257.8 through 257.27, and whereas the authorization for the instructional support program will expire on June 30, 2020, and whereas this resolution sets forth the proposal of the board of directors, including the method that will be used to fund the program, and whereas notice of the time and place of specific public, or, I'm sorry, a public hearing must be published. Now, therefore, it is resolved, the board of directors wishes to consider continued participation in the instructional support programs provided in Iowa Code, Sections 257.18 through 257.27, for a period of five years commencing the fiscal year, ending June 30, 2021. Number two, the additional funding for this instructional support program for a budget year should be determined annually and shall not exceed 10% of the total regular program district cost for the budget year, and monies received under Iowa Code Section 257.14 as a budget adjustment for the budget year. Three, monies received by the district for the instructional support program may be used for any general fund purpose. Four, the instructional support program should be funded by instructional support state aid and a combination instructional support property tax levied annually upon the taxable property within the school district, commencing with the levy of property taxes for collection in the fiscal year, ending June 30, 2021. Five, the secretary is authorized and directed to give notice of a public hearing to be held in the boardroom, 1429 West Avenue, Burlington Community School District, Burlington, Iowa, on June 15, 2019, at 7:00 PM. At 6:00, following the public hearing, the board intends to take action on the question whether to consider continued participation in the instructional support program.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the resolution to consider continued participation in the instructional support levy and hold a public hearing on July 15, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hatterburg. To clarify, this is the public hearing in July 15.
July 15.
July 15, that's our next meeting. And because of this resolution, we will do a roll call.
Director Courtney.
Yes.
Director Hatterburg.
Yes.
Director Kendall.
Yes.
Director Roberts.
Yes.
Director Vicstrum.
Yes.
Director Ross.
Yes.
Hey, hopefully you have a bit of discussion, but I consider this vital of the district.
I'm sorry.
Everyone else considers it that way. This is much like the levy we passed a while back, the PPA.
Absolutely. Very critical.
Everybody's understand it's critical.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Courtney. All right, we'll move on to our last item, items for discussion, the Piper Jaffrey engagement letter.
Yes, this is with the extension of the save, the opportunity the district will have to issue and possibly refinance some of the existing safe bonds. The district has typically historically worked with Piper Jaffrey, so just asking for the board approval for an engagement letter with Piper Jaffrey to continue with their services for any additional possible bonding that we may do.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the engagement letter with Piper Jaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Roberts, any further discussion?
I have worked with them off and on for years. I've always found them to be a very reputable firm, and I'm glad we're still with them.
We have used them how long, Greg? I was going to say, as long as I know.
As long as I can think of.
All the time I was on board, starting in '92 or '93, whatever that was, so we've been doing it a long time, and they're just, they're good people.
And the fees are associated with a certain set percentage of bonding, is that correct? So that's not a question for this. All right, any other discussion or question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll go to board communications. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Courtney.
I don't really have anything. It's been, these summer meetings are always a little more relaxing. This one wasn't as much, but usually it is a little more relaxing, so. I don't think, saying I look forward to RagBri, I'd say we're going to host, I think, 19 people in our yard. 19 people in our yard and I think it's exciting. I didn't realize they went through musketeen. I thought musketeen had always been a final destination too, but it sounded like they said they went through, so I'm not sure about that. But it's nice, it's fun to be a pass through town instead of a destination. Destination, they don't spend much time, they dip their tires and get back out here and they'll be here for a day or two.
Thank you, Ms. Hatterburg.
Well, I would just like to acknowledge that of our gifts that's been given to the district, so far this year, we have $99,435.27. I'd just like to publicly thank the community for supporting all of our programs and, you know, it's one of those things that we just should never, ever take for granted and really appreciate. And then the other thing is I really want to express my, how was it? I really think that the work session that we experienced a couple weeks ago was so beneficial. I think all of us together in one room made a big difference that we all are hearing the same things. We had some great discussion and I look forward to phase two of that same meeting. And I think that's going to put us all on the same page for addressing some of the challenges that we have experienced the last couple of years and for this coming year.
Thank you. Mr. Bixter.
Yes, I can remember when I went over to summer school, it was a sentence as opposed to going out and doing something that's a lot of fun and educational also, sometimes it sneaks in on these kids. But I went to the fish hatchery in Centerville, which was an interesting concept, kids were good. Few of them were real interested, some of them are still looking at the trees and the birds and whatever else out there, but I think on the whole, it was a very good experience. And I guess they're going to Dubuque, to the River Museum, which should get their attention also, neat place.
So you were adjudicated to summer school, don't you say?
A lot of things. I always had to check to see whether my diploma was signed, I'll try to say that. But no, it's an enjoyable experience, I think, rather than a have to. And that's the neat thing about it. And I hope we continue to do that and I hope we continue to have a great people doing what they're doing.
It's now an opportunity instead of...
Yes.
Well, thanks for participating in that too, as an opportunity. Ms. Roberts?
I just wanted to say thank you to that Transitional Alliance program. They came and spoke to us with Ms. Kalina a while back. It's off to a good start this summer and they're really taking kids to various places to give them more opportunities and so that is a very neat opportunity. And I'm glad our district has it, it doesn't sound like a lot of districts around do. So that's a wonderful asset of Burlington School District and thank you to all the people volunteering for RagBri, that is amazing.
Thank you. Mr. Kendall?
I want to acknowledge and thank Mr. Turtle for coming this evening and also mentioning school safety, that is of course something that's always on all of our minds. So I think I appreciate that refresher and the reminder that there are board elections this year. So I appreciate that. The RagBri is going to be a big deal and we'll be talking about this again in July probably, but we have a chance to really show off what's awesome about Burlington and hopefully raise a little money for music and boosters, athletic boosters at the same time. Congratulations to the science fair recipients, Mr. Cohen, I hope we can get that on our Facebook page. This is one of those things, it's kind of right up there with state music qualifiers and, I mean, we just, there's so many great things about our district that we just can't brag enough about. And we need to and we should and we owe it to our students and everybody who's worked hard to get there to brag about their accomplishments. Thank you, Ms. Sanding, also for leading them and guiding them along the way as well. And I noticed the baseball team went to the World Series, College World Series. I thought that was fantastic and I guess I was negligent in not knowing that they'd done this maybe before, but it got me to thinking what a, you know, and baseball being in the summer, it's a little different. You can get away to do things that you can't for football season or basketball season or soccer season, but it would really be great if the other sports could find something that, even if it's just a college football game somewhere or a college basketball game somewhere during the season. But I think that was, I really thought that was a fantastic idea and what a bonding opportunity for the coaches and the players and a chance to see, you know, what it's like to play baseball at the college level. So I thought that was fantastic and it'd be great to see that expanded somehow, so.
Thank you. Well, you've all stolen everything I had, so I was really impressed by the science fair participants and going international and all that. And thank you, Ms. Sanding, for leading that, it's really impressive. And I do notice too, we have more of an online presence, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, I think. And there are a lot of things out there to gain a lot of information, so I think that's good. Just need to keep communicating with our community. With that, I would entertain a motion from the board.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Roberts, also no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Do we have to set a meeting?